Jordan Morales, how are you, sir?
Doing good. Thanks for having me this morning.
Thank you for coming in, man. I know you're a busy man. You're working, um, you work for BSU as we were just talking about, uh, fifteen years in computer science department. I have a great idea for an app. You're also running for city council of Garden City.
Boise, Boise.
Oh, excuse me, Boise, Boise. Um, you're, but again, I was telling you all about like, it was fantastic. You're gonna have to like, come to for the pub crawl for, it's gonna be great for Garden City.
I signed up to be designated driver.
Yes. So I don't live, I'm not, I'm not in Garden City. You're not in Garden City. It's gonna be fantastic because we'll just get to hang out with all the Garden City people who are like, super nice and respectable people. They're like the nicest campaign people in the, in the Treasure Valley. Anyway, so look, here's the thing. I have an idea for an app. I think it's the best idea for an app ever. Okay? And being in the computer science, you can back me up on this. All right. This is the deal. I have a friend who's going through coding, coding school, right? And, um, he, he, his, uh, one of his assignments is like, come up with a program that you can use on an app that would like be valuable. So he comes up with this idea where he takes a picture of a refrigerator that's open. And then the app uses AI to make a recipe with all the stuff in the refrigerator. So it identifies the things in it and then it's like, okay, you can probably make like, turtle and ketchup soup. I don't know why you have a turtle in your fridge, but you do. You're like, oh, turtle and ketchup, right? Whatever. So that was the idea. Here's the plan. Okay? You take this idea and you take a giant bin. Do you have kids?
I do. Three young kids.
Okay. You take a giant bin of Legos that you got at a garage store, a garage sale. You take a picture, you tell it an area of interest, be it, you know, castles, Star Wars, princess, whatever you want. And you're like, give me instructions and it analyzes the pieces and it's like, you could make something that looks like this. And then it gives you the instructions for it. Tell me, that is not the most genius idea ever.
It sounds like a super fun idea. And I will say, I, you know, I have a tote of Legos that I have brought from my childhood, you know? Hand me down to my kids. They've accumulated their Legos. We have way too many Legos. We don't know what to do with them. This would give us a lot of great ideas.
And you know what? Like, I actually went out as a, as a younger father, I went out to the garage sales looking for the mismatch bins because predominantly I was like, look, you can teach kids to follow directions. It's gonna be a lot more fun if you teach them to create. They'll have an infinite number of options to create with. They're only gonna have one path if you follow directions. I was like, so I have to teach them to create with like a mismatch. But this is like, when you buy those bins, it's thousands of dollars worth of sets. You just don't know what the sets are. You're like, there's somewhere in there is like, somebody's like, your college savings account.
Okay, I'm gonna give you a version, you know, your update once you go to two point O.
Okay, what?
And that is, what's the missing pieces for the sets?
Yeah, yeah.
And how do you just automatically print them on your three D printer? Because I can't tell you how many sets. It's just like two pieces I'm missing.
Okay, Jordan, listen.
And Lego probably doesn't like this. I don't know. We might get this taken down.
My dream as a young person growing up broke was like, get mismatched Legos. You're going to like, not only do you have a cell phone with an app that you can use, but you have a three D printer. Get out of here with that nonsense. Like, that's just, anyway, listen, Boise, you're running on opposed, which means you get to come in and just talk freely about the state of the city and what you see as work that has been done, what you see as work that needs to be done. Talk to me about Boise.
Yeah, so Boise is an awesome city. I like to say it's the best city in the state and all the other cities are just close second, right?
You know, you live rent free in their heads. Like, like Nampa, Caldwell, everybody talks about Boise. Boise never talks about Caldwell and Nampa. Boise doesn't care.
You know what? Well, maybe we'll talk about them today. I think there's a lot of really good stuff going on throughout the state of Idaho. Um, you know, I grew up in Boise. My mom is from southeastern Idaho. I'd say I'm sixth generation Idaho and I'm counting the first generation that moved here as well. Okay? That's important.
That's fine.
Uh, and, and so I know you, you bring this up every now and then. And, um, and so, you know, we moved to this side of the state, first grade. So I pretty much grew up here. I've lived in four of the six council districts in Boise, funny enough. And I, I think that's probably a record on council. I haven't verified. Um, and then spent a couple of years in Meridian, Meridian as well. So, um, had a little bit of experience around the valley. We have called southeast Boise home for the past twenty years. And I just never planned on moving. My brother lives next door. My mom's in the neighborhood down the street. Being able to be close to family is just makes even, even better. Boise City Council. So Boise got redistricted, um, as part of legislation to, to bring representation to, to more parts of large cities that maybe weren't being represented at the time. Uh, my district, which is district four, is southeast Boise and the Vista Bench, uh, hadn't had someone on city council from those, those boundaries before. And so in twenty twenty-three, that was the first race for that district through Manhattan, had a couple of competitors at the beginning. And I'd been involved in local politics for a long time. I had knocked thousands of doors for other candidates or initiatives, efforts. Felt like I understood what kind of is important to our neighbors, those priorities, and wanted to bring them to Boise City Council. At that time, it was a two-year term as well. I don't know how this happened, but all the guys on Boise City Council got the two-year terms and all the ladies got four. But that's very chivalrous of us, I think.
Well done, sir.
Yeah. But, um, I, you know, at that point I knew that I would be signing up for another campaign in a couple of years, but, um, obviously didn't know, uh, that no one else would file against me. Hopefully that means that I'm doing a good job, uh, but looking forward to continuing those priorities this next four years.
Talk to me about growth in Boise. There are a lot of different ideas with, um, uh, I have, uh, Ali Robbie, Senator Robbie coming on, um, in a, in a couple of weeks. She formerly of Jesse Tree, but now working, again, still working with, um, the problem with homelessness, still working with a problem with housing attainability and accessibility. There's a lot to be said about, excuse me, development, infill, uh, public, private partnerships, rezoning, um, kind of giving hands to home, or excuse me, giving things into the hands of homeowners like, uh, ADUs. Do you guys don't have a pre-approved ADU set, right?
We don't. And this is actually a really interesting topic, ADUs nationally. Um, there is a natural expectation that if you just had a pre-approved ADU set, it's just plug and play, easy.
You're right.
Cheap plans, right? What people are really finding is ADUs are kind of like a jewel box in the backyard where people wanna customize it. They want, they wanna make it look, you know, feel part of that yard, their, their home. Have the special little things that they would want in a smaller space.
Sure.
And so while AD, pre-approved ADU plans could be helpful to some, many wanna customize it based on what their backyard looks like and what they want that to, that space to, to, to come, to look like. And so.
Why don't, why don't have like six pre-approved?
Yeah.
Like, this is what you should do. Go to every architecture firm or contractor in the city and be like, we have a competition. Submit your plans for review. And whoever wins the top six and have like two-story skinny ones, have like rant, mini ranch style ones. And then be like, these are available through the city. You'll offer them with all the renderings and pictures available through the city and then you customize. I'm just, I'm very excited about it. I love ADUs.
I like the idea of an ADU library. And in fact, over this past year, they've just exploded, uh, past year and a half with our ADU, uh, changes. And I look at all the developments that happen in my district each week, new applications that come in. I love seeing the ADU applications. They always talk about, I mean, I would say ninety percent of them talk about them being homes for their kids, their aging parents. I've even seen them saying, we're moving into the ADU and our, our kids and their three kids are moving in the main house. Um, and, and I would, and I love seeing all the different designs. I think an ADU library would be really interesting and give people ideas, um, and maybe some of these, um, contractors are local, um, that are, that are putting together, some of them are manufactured, some are built on site. One of the things about ADUs that you may not know is, uh, so they can be a maximum of nine hundred square feet in Boise or seventy percent of what the main home is. So there's a lot of varying kind of issues there where someone, you know, if he had, you know, six pre-approved plans, they might be able to have a bigger square footage or they might need less depending on the main, main home site. So. So it's very custom. People, people want the custom, like the ADU, get the most you can that fits in the space. So it is an interesting conversation nationally. Just what I'm hearing from other city council members is that people are wanting the custom ones, even if they do have pre-approved plans. But.
Yeah.
It is a cool idea. And, and maybe that is, hey, look, we like this specific plan. And now with the age of AI, you're saying this is our, these are our requirements. What else could we do? You know, and getting things that are, yeah, sure, you're saving money on pre-engineered plans and such, but.
I actually wanted to ask you about that. As we were talking about this, being a computer guy, what, what is, like, there's a question about jobs, right? Draftsmen, architects, like is, do you think there's a world where in the future you, or even today, I go home, I'm like, hey, man, I want some ADU plans. I want it to look like this. Boom, boom, boom. I want it to fit, uh, let's say Boise building code. Come on, ChatGPT, like, get going, Chatty G. And it's like, okay, here you go. And it pumps out the, the plans and, you know, they would be sufficient based on, you know, building code and other ADU plans available. Like, do you think that's a world that we're entering into soon?
Yeah, likely. And first, I'll just, I'll just say, computer guy maybe is a little too much. I run the operations for the computer science program. I'm the business grad.
Do you use a computer?
I do use a computer.
Okay, computer guy.
And I'm very involved, obviously seeing a lot of what our industry is doing. Um, we actually had a local company called Idea Room that did some really interesting tech, a floor plan type stuff like that. Um, and chief architect up in North Idaho, there are companies that are doing some really interesting stuff in that space. Uh, if I was a true computer scientist, I'd be working for one of those companies.
Your computer scientist adjacent.
But, uh, yeah, exactly. I'm, I'm supporting the, the future computer science professionals of Idaho. Um, but yeah, absolutely. I think, um, going back, your question was about just, yeah, throwing stuff in AI. I mean, I, we added onto our house a few years ago and so our backyard just got completely messed up. All that new crawl space on top of our beautiful grass. So we're going through that finally, three years later now, where we've recovered enough from that to put new sprinklers in. And, um, yeah, I, I use ChatGPT to help me design my sprinkler layout and, and all that. I mean, it was, it was very easy, very simple. Um, I think that you are to that point. I think the thing with, um, anything like that is, you know, you're still gonna have, you have those, those little, you know, things that our staff, professionals at the city kind of can see about, you know, it could be hillside requirements. It could be all kinds of other variables that maybe an AI isn't fully trained on. And so unless it's fully trained on exactly specifics in Boise, you're probably still gonna need some help. But yeah, absolutely. AI is a really cool, brainstorming creation tool to be able to use on, I think, anything.
Do you think that that, um, is there any discussion in the city or has anybody proposed essentially pumping in the layout for Boise City? And putting it in Chatty G and like, hey, man.
ADU creator.
Or, or, or just what would be like taking into account all, and you guys probably already know like where all the major transit lines are and things of that nature, but is there any discussion of like, we need, we have our ideas that we think are best. Why don't we just double check them with a Chatty G and see what it comes up with as far as viable public, private partnerships or, you know, um, locations for more parks or grocery store zoning or things of that nature?
I'll tell you what, I'm gonna write that down and I'm gonna get back to you. I think, I think one of the, uh, yeah, this is all emerging. This is all emerging. This is all emerging stuff that honestly, um, I attended the National League of Cities City Summit last year and AI was kind of a primary focus and cities are just kind of starting to have real world examples of how they're using it. Um, really good examples all over the country. I believe it was Phoenix or one of their suburbs where they're using it to identify, uh, their biggest pinch points in their sewer system that, that might need to be upgraded to avoid, you know, more costly repairs if it was to fail. Just all kinds of different, we, we have been using an AI tool to help us lay out, you know, where do we need fire stations and what kind of staffing? If we're to take a couple of our firehouses to four-person staffing, where does that make the most sense based on calls and traffic times and all this kind of stuff? And so, um, yeah, it's, it is infiltrating probably everything at some point. But I think in terms of being able to plug in, be able to have it from a, you know, homeowner perspective of saying, hey, this is, this is the zone I'm in, you know, this, and everything is already kind of in there. So that could give you a, a good kind of idea for what you could do to provide more housing. Um, cause just kind of going back to, you know, you, the question about growth in Boise.
Yeah.
You know, if you look at over the past decade or more of growth in the Treasure Valley, you know, Boise's growth rate is maybe here and the rest of the valley is like here. And it, it really, um, finally, the modern zoning code had been worked on for several years, but, um, there really was kind of a new level of urgency of, hey, there's a lot of development going in pretty far away from, you know, significant infrastructure and places people wanna be, the foothills, the river, that kind of stuff. And, um, and, uh, you know, that's gonna cost all of our valley, all of our state taxpayers and, and we need more homes where people wanna live, work and play. And so the modern zoning code was huge for, um, getting the government out of the way in a little bit, um, and legalizing more different types of housing. And, uh, and some of that ADUs is a big one. That's a great tool for a homeowner to be able to, um, find additional financial security or provide housing to people they love and they care about. But also just being able to add more density in places that make sense. So best-in-class transit corridors, we use that term a lot. That's every fifteen-minute bus service during peak hours. That's the kind of bus service that you just walk to the bus stop and you don't have to look and plan ahead of time when you're gonna get there and, and all that. And if you barely miss one, you know, you don't have to wait thirty minutes or an hour.
And is that already, does that already exist?
Along those routes. Yes. So, um, in twenty twenty-three, Valley Regional Transit, which I am a council liaison for Boise on and serve on the executive board as Secretary of Treasurer. I love Valley Regional Transit. I used it for two years solely to get downtown. Didn't wanna pay for a parking pass down here, um, even though I don't have transit access in my neighborhood. It's more of a park and ride situation. But they, they looked at their routes and kind of the age-old problem is, we need more riders to pay for better service, but you don't get more riders without better service. And so, um, identifying that it makes more sense to build some best-in-class transit lines that people can rely on and actually enjoy using, um, to increase ridership where that makes sense. And that makes sense where the people, where more people live, right? So denser areas. So we have our transit corridors like a Vista, um, or State Street where more development can build around those. Uh, because people that want to have that kind of lifestyle, maybe they don't wanna own a vehicle or, um, or own multiple vehicles and the, and the cost that that includes into their daily budget, um, can rely on transit because they have every fifteen-minute access. It's convenient. Um, and you just walk out there and you use it whenever. It's not a, oh, yeah, the bus comes at nine twenty-five. I gotta leave my house fifty minutes before.
Yeah, yeah. There's a, I, I've spoken with a lot of people about this, both in and out of the city of Boise, obviously, because you have connections in Caldwell and, and Nampa and things like that. And it, it's exactly what you articulated, which is, look, everybody realizes if the bus came once a day, no one would use it. Cause like you miss it and it's over. Like you just, you can't even plan on it. Or if the bus came every single minute, it, it's irrelevant when you go out, cause you're like, here's another one forty-five seconds later, right? So everyone would use it at one a minute and nobody would use it at one a day. There's a, there's a balance in there somewhere where you have just enough, uh, fu- funding going to it that you can get the frequency that optimizes utilization. Cause if you had one every single minute, most of them would go empty. If you had one, once a day, most of those, if not all, would go empty. But there's like this optimization curve. And it's this really funny problem. The, and you also have people that communicate about Valley Regional Transit or public transit as like, these will never be self-sustaining. They always lose money. And the answer of course is yes, like my Highlander, right? Like I have a Nissan Frontier from two thousand and four. It will never make me money, right? Like it is a loser every single day, every single second. I lose on insurance. I lose on gas. I lose on depreciation. I lose on everything. We lose money everywhere. The question is, as a community, do we collectively wanna say, okay, everyone loses on, on transportation, but we can actually decrease that loss, um, for the community or for people that really need it, or increase capacity to earn money for people that need it and can't absorb a loss of a personal vehicle? Should we engage in this kind of, uh, you know, funding for this mechanism, right?
Yeah.
And that's like this weird thing that everybody's battling with. And you have density problems. You have transportation problems on, um, uh, you know, and traffic problems on the freeway. We're never widening the lanes to like ten lanes each way. Like the astronomical cost of that, you know, so public transit, it's like, but then people give like, oh, public transit is a loss leader. It's like, wow, man, this is such a weird conversation to have.
I think we don't think about what the cost is of the asphalt and concrete we're rolling on, right?
Right.
And if we did think about it, we're like, oh, well, that's what, you know, registration fees or gas taxes for or whatever, right? But not realizing that it doesn't cover everything. And I think all you have to do is look at our, you know, millions of dollars in deferred maintenance that is unfunded at the state transportation level to know that it's not paying for itself, right?
Right.
And so, yeah, every, every level of transit is subsidized. And, and the other thing I think is, first of all, when we talk about housing and talk about being able to acquire housing within your budget, transportation is a big part of housing costs that we can't price into our square footage, right? When you're looking at price per square foot, you don't really know the area and what the additional transportation costs are gonna cost you. So, you know, if that's the difference between, oh, we're a one-car family because we have access to transit for the daily commuter.
Sure.
Now you have maybe no car, no, no second car payment. You definitely have no additional insurance, no additional maintenance, tires, oil changes and then fuel. And, um, the other big thing I think we don't talk enough about is quality of life and just, I, I think for people that grow up in Boise, we're not probably culturally used to public transit. The thing I found the most when I realized I was gonna do public transit instead of driving downtown for a couple of years there was just, I, I came home a better dad, honestly. I was decompressed at the end of the day. I wasn't fighting people out of downtown, you know, white knuckle driving. And even if, even if you think driving's no big deal, I think subconsciously, you're naturally on the defense, right? You're driving a piece of metal going forty-five, sixty miles an hour on the freeway. And, and I think that stuff really kind of plays a role. And I was able to clear emails, clear all my notifications from the day and walk in and, and just be ready to be, be dad. And, um, same thing. Just in terms of productivity, if you think about the things that you could be doing on those commutes, um, in your, your daily life or getting to work early on, um, your, your email or whatever you might be doing on the bus. There's a quality of life and productivity component that we don't also realize is really pretty awesome.
How much is a bus pass? Do you know?
Yeah, it's, uh, that's a great question. Yeah. I wish, I wish I could tell you, actually.
Because actually, one of the things that you mentioned, like I, I come from, um, during the legislative session, I was here every day. Okay? So when you were like, I don't have to pay for parking, I was spending like five hundred dollars a month for parking. Now, mind you, for a podcaster, that's like, you know, not Joe Rogan, five hundred dollars a month. It's like, I can't keep this up. But I didn't really know, I didn't really have an alternative, but honestly, like, I may, and talk about white knuckling in January, when you're heading east at like eight AM, get out, like you're staring directly at the sun. I'm white knuckling my car. I think I'm gonna die at every second because literally it's just like right into your eyeballs, right on the horizon on State Street. It's, it's pretty rough.
Yeah. I wanna say that you can, I, I feel like it was maybe like thirty bucks a week or something like that. I mean, when I was looking at a, you know, downtown permit, like for reserve spots, like two thousand dollars. So it's not even close, uh, for, for a year. But, and, and full, full disclosure, one of the benefits of working at a place like Boise State or the city of Boise also, I add, um, is that those employers are bought in as a group to Valley Regional Transit. So you get free transit service. So for, for the, you know, that's, that's a huge employer benefit, honestly. So that's partially why I don't know the true cost. Um, but it is, it's a, it's a couple bucks a ride or something like that. I mean, it, it totally pays for itself. It's not even close.
Man, okay. Well, uh, so again, transportation, growth. Talk to me about the economy in Boise, right? Like, is there, is there stuff that can be done to further, you know, bolster the, the businesses and, and, you know, help local, local stuff downtown?
Yeah, I think for the longest time in Boise, you know, we hear from kind of the legislative level taxes, right? Tax cuts. Yeah. It was always, it felt like from employers, it was education. Um, I, I work in the College of Engineering and the Department of Computer Science. That was created twenty-six years ago, I believe, because Micron was like, hey, we really need this here. We need to, we need talent. Um, right. And so, um, so that I think that's a, the, the pipeline of talent is always something that our local employers need. And our economy in general, if you think about our startup economy too, right? People that are in that startup space, they're gonna create the next Cradle Point, Clearwater Analytics, those big, you know, companies that have been acquired and, and gone public in, in our community. And I think now, over the past handful of years, it's also become, we need housing. We need places for our employees to come. A lot of employers are recruiting people from outside the valley and always have. And in the past, you know, it was easy to sell people on the cost of living differences between Boise and wherever they were coming from, right? Your dollar went a lot further here than in the Bay Area or Seattle. Um, now it's just, I mean, where, where's the housing inventory? And so it's, it's new housing, I think, is a really big, big thing. So when I think about employers like Micron, they're really important to our community, bringing a couple thousand more employees in. I'm thinking about, yeah, where are they gonna live? Where are they gonna buy? What are their lifestyles gonna be like? Um, you know, I think you mentioned, uh, that the recent conference that, that we attended where they noted that they were building the largest parking garage in the state of Idaho. And that, my first thought was like, oh, wow, that's crazy. And then I kind of like, was a little like bummed that like it was gonna take that mu- that there wasn't public transit out to Micron, that there's not enough housing close by to be able to ha- have these families, you know, better quality of life and not spending an hour to an hour and a half round trip on the freeway where the housing is being built, maybe further out west data or Cannon County. So I think housing, so, you know, talent, um, being able to, to hire employees and house them, I think is, is kind of the thing that, that our companies need. And, and look, Boise is a place that people wanna be. It's a, it's a great place. We've always had that going for us from an economic development perspective. But we also need to be able to support those that are here or that could come here company-wise.
Yeah, I have a, I have a friend who's actually, talked, talked to him yesterday. He was in law enforcement in, uh, in Idaho City. And he's like, I'm moving. I'm like, wha- what do you mean? And he's like this really iconic guy in the area and he's moving out of state. He's like, listen, I'm close to retirement. And there is no way like that I could retire off of my pension here. He was like, I'm, you know, five years away. He's like, I'm moving out of state. Housing is even in Idaho City. Like it's so expensive. It's impossible for people to live here at this point with any kind of localized job. And he said, uh, I think he said that Idaho has become the second most expensive, um, place to live based on economic, um, capacity within the localized area. Like if you have a job that's, you know, online sales or something and you move here, that's not, you know, like you don't really care about the cost of housing because you aggregate income from across the world. But if you're like, okay, I gotta move here and I'm gonna be in law enforcement. I'm gonna be a teacher. I'm gonna work for BSU. I'm gonna, you know, work construction, whatever it might be. And you're driving economic prosperity from that localized area. This is like the second most expensive place in the country to move to. And it's like, how did we, I mean, I know how we got here. I'm part of the problem, but.
You know, well, no, I think, um, you know, it's a good problem to have to be a place where people wanna come to, right? The inverse is a bad problem to have.
Right. You don't wanna be the cheapest real estate in the country. That's actually a great point.
You do not, right? Um, and, and so, but, you know, I think there's probably a confluence of factors. One of the big things I've always thought about, um, you know, being here during the recession in two thousand and eight was just kind of the dramatic, um, end to construction for multifamily for some time and probably all types of construction. And so being the community that we are, I think we had a, probably a deeper backlog, uh, once coming out of things like that. Certainly multifamily really didn't start taking off till, you know, the past handful of years. Now everyone thinks all we build is apartments, but we're just catching up. But I think that that's, uh, talking about that, we want, um, people to, to be able to live where, where they work. Uh, one of the, this is actually an interesting, um, story I once heard from a former ACHD commissioner. He was visiting his mom who was at an assisted living facility in southeast Boise and chatting with the, the two women there that were taking such great care of her and realized they were commuting in from Caldwell, uh, for this job that, you know, as a caretaker at assisted living, you know, community, a service industry that is super important. Like how important is that for, for, you know, child seeing their parents, uh, being well taken care of? And think about how sustainable that was, right? Like, how, how much longer are you gonna be able to have people that can afford those commutes or want to do those kinds of commutes? And so when I see, um, you know, opposition to more homes, uh, it's, I, I often, I'm thinking about those people, uh, the nurses, the teachers, uh, law enforcement, our firefighters, uh, you know, we have great firefighters at Station Twelve by me that commutes in from Caldwell. They'd love to be in Boise. Um, and so thinking about how important the, uh, those homes here are to our wellbeing as well, to, to our industries, our services.
Yeah, man. What a, what a weird problem. I guess it's not that weird. And, and as you're pointing out, it's a good problem to have, but it is a real problem. I got very anxious, um, in my, in my former community that my, my sons would never be able to move back to where they grew up. And I think that was a problem there. I think it still is a problem there. But it also gives me pause now, knowing the area that I live in. And I'm not saying they need to go to like, straight to the house that I have at forty-three. It's like, no, 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 man. You got, you start stepping up. Yeah, it is a concern.
And I think, you know, uh, old church leader of mine, uh, once was quoted as saying, the strength of any nation lies within the walls of its homes. And I just think, um, having, you know, being a, being someone that has family close by, um, the just huge important support and benefit and joy that that brings. And I, that is, that's why housing is the number one issue when I talk to people because they're starting to see their kids, their grandkids, growing up quite some distance away and the opportunities to be part of their lives. Um, and then likewise, being able to take care of aging parents and, and things of that nature. It's gotten very hard to do. So it's very, I'm very cognizant of that. Obviously, you know, me and my brother took two more homes here in the, in the valley. We each have kids. Not all of them may stay here, but, um, we would hope that they'd have that opportunity. And, and when I talk to, you know, high schoolers, this is an issue that does come up. We had a session at One Stone and, and that came up as a concern for the future of like, where would they, where they're gonna be? Are they gonna be in the city they grew up in? And, and I think it's good to get away, experience other things. But we see a lot of people that wanna boomerang back, right? And, and are just having a really hard time doing that. And so, um.
Did you say, did you say you had a session at One Stone?
Yeah.
Yeah, I had that. I had the headmaster on. So I've had her on twice. Yeah, I very much enjoyed it. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, really good kids. All of our kids, uh, all of our schools. Uh, yeah, I'm a little biased to Timberline Bora being in my district, but, um, but yeah, this, this next generation, very thoughtful. Um, that was a really cool opportunity to kind of think. That was a really cool opportunity to kind of think about what was on their minds and how they see things. It was actually a session with Better Angels, which was really cool.
Is that the red and blue, the Better Angels guys?
I don't know if they call themselves red and blue, but bringing the two sides together, yes.
I have, I have some people from that coming on as well, like really enjoy the mission. Like obviously I talk to all sides and they're like, listen, we're basically the same thing.
Like, it's so important, you know, this is what I love about local politics. I, I love knocking doors, actually. I was, I was Latter Saint missionary, so maybe that's where I acquired it. I love meeting people, talk to people, finding connection, and I love knocking doors. And when I get to be on a doorstep, talking to someone that probably, that maybe doesn't agree with eighty percent or maybe just fifty percent of what I, what I believe in, I can still have a normal conversation because I'm telling them I live down the street, right? I, I grew up in these neighborhoods, I, I travel through these neighborhoods, I understand the neighborhood, I love your neighborhood. That's why I love local politics. I think when you actually get people together to talk about things, that's just a total different tone than when you're talking about national things with a keyboard. It's just totally different.
And you can, you can merge to appreciating each other. You can, you can celebrate your shared values really quickly. Like if you and I are neighbors and say we're polar opposites, we're like, yeah, but what about like St. Lawrence's Great Iron? That's some good food, like, yeah. Or like, what about Fun Wiva? Like, oh my God, I love, shout out Fun Wiva, I'm a big fan. Like, eh, eh, we can come to that, it's like, let's go get a bowl of pho and argue about, it's like, we both, we order the same thing. Oh, you get the spicy chicken too, I do too. And then, you know, you, you just have so many more opportunities to have shared humanity and shared value sets. And it's like, all right. And maybe we disagree about funding formulas for education, like maybe we disagree about, you know, state control over local control, like maybe we disagree about federalism, like, I don't know. But we could, but, but we still have Fun Wiva, like we still have that.
There's more levels to the social fabric, like there's more layers, right? And so I think about that neighborhoods, you know, public school communities, all the PTO events, getting you out of your kind of normal circles that you, and getting you engaged with people that have different ideas or beliefs or, and those kinds of things. I think college sports is a big one too. I, I think you're not, you're not a big college sports guy, is what I hear.
Did college sports, I don't.
Like, I'm not going to see you in like a Boise State shirt, jersey going down the street.
I don't care about the twenty-one year olds athletic career. It doesn't matter to me and like my life does not revolve around how well or not well somebody per, like.
Nor should it, yeah, fans, we get a little crazy on that. But, but thinking about those layers of communities, you know, I think about the, all the guys that I like going to college sports games with, and we have a wide variety of political opinions. And so when tough things happen, you know, being able to talk about them and, and we still have that, that relationship, those levels of that social fabric that, that really keep us together. And so I think all that stuff's really important. And, and now in the digital space, you know, we're having less kind of just naturally occurring or maybe forced opportunities to, to kind of build that social fabric. And so any, anytime we can, you know, those communities, whether religious communities, college boards, employers, neighborhoods, you know, it's important.
Sorry to interrupt you there. You also, like if you meet somebody at a tailgate and you're eating chili, like you're hearing their bad jokes, they're grabbing you a beer or whatever, Diet Coke, you got Diet Coke.
Oh, absolutely.
Diet Coke, they're just like, grab you a pop, right? Whatever. You have all of these other interactions and then maybe two hours in, they drop something about like school funding. Okay, and they're on the opposite side of you, but you've had these two hours to like eat chili, you know, spill coke on your shirt, you know, like everybody's excited, you're walking in, you find your seats, you get them as concession, and they're like, and they're like, school funding.
And there's not a need to convince the other person.
No, no, no.
It's a, listen, at that point, you have a relationship where you're like, oh, okay, that's an interesting way to see it and, you know, that's, maybe I evolved, maybe I changed because of that.
Tell me more about that, but online, everything's distilled, you don't get the chili, you don't get the Diet Coke. Online, it's like they go straight for school funding, whatever the position is. And then you like, oh, you have to confront the, the potential friction in a relationship before the relationships even had an opportunity to develop. And that's why the casual unintended interactions that are these like meandering walks through getting to know somebody are so vital to, you know, neighborhood cohesion and local community, right? Without that, you never get to know that like, I have a friend from college, I had her over for lunch. We both had kids by this point, I had known Teresa Oja from, from like, at the time I was eighteen until we both had to be thirty, she came over with her husband and like her kid, just for like a random lunch. I find out she doesn't like watermelon, like who hurt you? You don't like watermelon? And it's like, like you need those ridiculous things that you, you know, learn about people that you can laugh about and then you're like, and the school funding.
Yeah, we'd be really boring if we're all the same, exactly.
No, we'd be all real boring if we're like Teresa Oja and we didn't like watermelon, like that's insane to me.
And we should appreciate, you know, we should appreciate parity. I think, you know, anytime you have maybe a super majority of, of one opinion, that can lead to, you know, a lot of group think or not, not thinking through how things can be better. And so whenever I see, yeah, I, I believe that, you know, divided government can be helpful, parity could be helpful, differing, differing views and opinions can be helpful. One of the cool things about Boise City Council that maybe people don't realize is, yeah, this council does have quite a bit of independence scattered throughout it. You know, we have, there, there may be a kind of more majority of maybe one side of the partisan aisle. But it was, I think, probably four months into my term last, last year that I had voted differently than every member on that council, even, you know, my dear friend, Council President Nash, who I've volunteered for every one of his campaigns, even the, the first one that he lost in the legislature. And, and even, even voted somewhat differently than him on one of those issues. So, you know, I think understanding that and seeing how different perspectives can kind of come together and make results better, even if they're not exactly the result I wanted. You know, I could talk about the things maybe I wish would have gone a little differently of on city council that would have gone my way.
Yeah.
But I believe my voice helped make that project maybe better or help chart a course for a future that, that could be better because of that perspective that I brought. And so I think seeing difference of opinion, less as a attack and more of a, you know, information gathering, being interested in something, critical thinking can really help us, help us do things better, right? That's what we want, continuous improvement.
I couldn't agree with more. And just look, even if you take Idaho, let's say state politics and you consider it from the, from the lens of, okay, Democrats are super minority, Republicans are super majority, it's not like the Republicans are in lockstep. Right, she's like, they're fighting, like, like we inherently have differences of opinion and some people's identity is wrapped around being like the contrarian and some people's identity is wrapped around being a pleaser and some people's identity is wrapped around being like a large leader. And then you have people fomenting insurrection and like, you have all, and it's like, that's within one party. So the idea that we, you know, don't want competing ideas is ridiculous when you consider how many factions erupt when you have everybody that, that self declares as being party affiliated. And then it's like five different caucuses erupt out of it because they don't agree with each other. And it's like, this is, this is just human nature. Like we need, we need, and we, in the absence of, of it, we produce distinct groups. We need different, you know, competing ideas, like that's just baked into us.
Yeah, I've, you know, Idaho has, has a history of really good governance with divided government.
Yeah.
You know, if you go back to the Cecil Landris years, you know, we had a Democrat run as governor and we had a Republican as lieutenant governor. And, you know, a lot of people maybe argue whether Cecil Landris was Idaho's greatest governor. We had some other good governors too. But that timeframe was really a very important time in Idaho where a lot of good things did happen. And so, yeah, this notion that that can't happen is, is very false. And I, and one of the, the perspectives I really like too is just thinking, you know, in a partisan race or even if it's nonpartisan, you know, part of being unopposed is actually, I think, not a great thing for the community. You know, when you have two or more good candidates running against each other, no matter who wins, we win, right?
Right.
And.
Which is why it's bad that you're unopposed.
It, yes.
It's bad for everyone, I'm here to shame you.
It's bad for everyone except for my wife, you know, and bless her, I love her so much. And she does so much for me to be able to do this job. This really is a second job. I think she's probably the only one that probably should be able to say that this is a really good thing. Maybe limits the amount of doors that I would have needed hit. But I think, you know, it is, you're, it's, and, and I appreciate you inviting me to be here and taking every opportunity I can get to still kind of come and talk about Boise because like I should be accountable for the things that we're doing and talking about those things, but it's also an opportunity to get feedback and help engage people in what we're doing. Because ultimately, you know, city of Boise, one of our mantras, there's nothing we can't do better. But we can't do that if we don't have the kinds of engagement that we need from our neighbors, right? We can't do that all by ourselves. And so being able to have this medium still, thank you for, for having me down here. But, you know, I, and I think so from that standpoint, whenever I see a primary challenge and all the drama that that happens within a party, it's like, whoa, like, hey, you know, this is an opportunity for more people to be interested and engaged. And hopefully voters know as much about the people they're voting against as the ones they're voting for. And if we did, I think we would, we would be benefiting greatly from these opportunities to talk about things and maybe evolve and grow, share, share ideas.
I love it, man. Listen, I know it's a working day for you. I, I appreciate that you came down, even though you're unopposed, you came out to have the conversation. Anything you want to hit here at the end?
Yeah, I would just say kind of maybe quick hits on city of Boise. You know, you, you've had conversations with other, other city council members and mayors about kind of the nature of cities right now and, and some of the problems we are tackling when it comes to inflation of costs and the limitations that we have with growth. And I think that's kind of our next big tack, problem to tackle with Boise. We talked a little bit about infill and we're going to do that really well. But I think we're, we're trying to figure that way out, that we can also grow out and not up. I, I'm a true believer, the modern zoning code provides neighborhoods that people will really love living in, mixed uses, commercial, dance studios and cafe down the street, whatever it is, parks, all of these things mixed in requires you to travel less to be able to go get the things that you need. And, you know, if we want to be a city for everyone and, and these neighborhoods are, are so amazing to be part of, then we also need to figure out how we can grow out too. You talk about staring into the sun on your drive in and, you know, that's one of the selling points for developments and the next county over to the east is, hey, come live out here in the desert and you don't have that, the sun in your face on your way in. You know, Boise, we, you know, prior leaders in Boise, well, there was the Simplots, the founders of Micron really thought that there would be more development south and east. That's why the Outlet Mall was there. And the Outlet Mall was dramatically different when I was a child, very popular toy shop, chocolates or all that. But, you know, obviously development went a different direction. And I think we're to that point where we have one of our city's largest employers on the edge. And we need to be looking at how, as a city, we can, we can develop out that way. Obviously, biggest cost to a city are first responders, our firefighters and, and law enforcement. I think our city's doing a good job at making sure that we're able to hire the best. And, and I hear from some of our neighboring mayors that are maybe doing too good of a job, but they work really hard.
I've heard that too.
And, you know, that's a proud point, but at the same time, we have to do that because they work really hard. The call volume for a law enforcement officer in Boise is a lot higher. It's a, they're, they're working really hard in Boise. We have fifty thousand people visiting Boise that are not Boise taxpayers today, at least. And that's not including game days and, and things like that. And so, so those are kind of, I think Boise does have some issues that we're, we're looking to tackle and may need more support. And we talk about transit infrastructure as well, getting people to these employers and especially Micron, being able to, to partner with them to hopefully bring transit to, to our, the southeast corner of the city. But there are a lot of really good things, I think, we're working on the city and we can always do better. So I would just put a call out to anyone that wants to reach out to me, jemoralis@cityofboise.org or you can find me on Twitter.
On X.
On X, yeah.
Well, look, man, let's do this. Thank you for coming out, let's keep the conversation going, come back in, we'll keep touching up.
Sounds good, appreciate you, thank you.